Wait a minute, Rob, we're ready.
You're ready?
No, we have to wait for Rob to say we can go on.
You're all set.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. I'd like to open up the zoning board of the Hills of Town in Mamaroneck's first meeting for the year 2021. And it's a Zoom meeting and Lisa will.
Uh, yes, thank you. This meeting is being held pursuant to Governor Cuomo's executive order 202.1 as extended. And the public hearings that will be held tonight will be pursuant to Governor Cuomo's executive order 202.15 as extended. Um, the public has received instructions about how to view this meeting, both on LMCTV channel, what channel?
Channel thirty-five on files and seventy-six on.
Okay, thanks. And then also on LMCTV.org. We will be accepting throughout the meeting emails to, Rob, can you, sorry, Rich, can you read the email address, please?
Um, we'll be receiving my email address right now are Paul Carey, P O L C A R I, at townofmamaroneckny.org and is written underneath my face.
Okay. And Francine, Secretary to the Board, can you first confirm that this meeting was duly noticed? And then take the role to establish whether we have a quorum?
Yes, this was duly noticed. Okay, roll call. Arthur Exler?
Yes.
Stephen Marsh?
Yes.
Jonathan Sacks?
Here.
Carol Miller?
Here.
Robin Nuchinski?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, Arthur, you can take it away.
Francine, would you like to read the first application?
Application number one, case number three, one, nine, three, Josh Goldstein and Hannah Garrett. Applications requesting a variance for a swimming pool on the premises located at one Colonial Lane and known on the tax assessment map as block one, two, zero, lot one, zero, seven.
And was this duly noticed?
This was.
Make a motion to open up the public hearing. Applicant here? Looks like it.
Who seconded it?
Second.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, for the record, my name is Bruce Reinheimer. I'm a licensed landscape architect and the owner of DHR Landscape Architecture. I'm here tonight on behalf of my clients, Heather Garrett and Josh Goldstein, to request variance approval to construct an in-ground swimming pool on their property. The pool will extend approximately sixteen feet into a side yard. Now, this lot is unique because it's an irregular shaped oversized lot on a cul-de-sac. And the house is located on the far west side of the property, resulting in a larger than normal side yard to the east. There's an exposed area of ledge rock that is located in the rear yard. The proposed pool location is reasonable as the use is consistent with other homes in the area. The pool will not be visible from adjacent properties. And the proposed pool location reduces the amount of ledge rock that is necessary to be excavated and minimizes grading. The pool location is a logical connection to the existing outdoor living space of the, of the house. And finally, it will have no adverse impacts on the physical or environmental conditions to the neighborhood. So we hope that you will agree that this is a very reasonable request and will approve the location of the pool as submitted. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have at this time.
Can you just define the side yard encroaching of six, you said sixteen feet?
Yeah, the pool, the pool starts in the rear of the property and it, it, it crosses over the side yard line by sixteen feet.
And is that, where does that show it on the site, your site plan?
There is a, there is a line that clearly shows the separation between the rear yard and the side yard property. It crosses a pool, it's a dash line.
This is, I have to tell you, this is a very complicated piece of property to determine the lots, the side yard requirements.
Yeah, it's a little bit different. Um, I think.
Bit difference? A lot more than a bit different. It looks like to me that the side of the pool is thirty eight point two feet from the side property line. So you tell me how it's, I just want to know if sixteen feet is what we've got the, the leaf you needed properly.
The, the, where we're proposing the pool is thirty-eight point two feet from the closest side yard property line. But it crosses the area that's considered side yard by sixteen feet.
How do you define that as being the side yard? What you say defined as side yard?
I, I had that defined by Richard.
Is that true? That it goes down the center of the property more or less?
Yeah, it's because of the angle of the house to the cul-de-sac, it's not perpendicular to the cul-de-sac. So it, it creates more side yard than you would normally expect.
No, I asked Richard.
Rear yard is how rear yard is defined in the town code, Arthur. It's by a line drawn to the rear line of the house.
So you then projected that line across the property?
That's correct.
The plane of the back, the furthest most back wall. Okay, that would, that would make sense. And where do you, where, where are you projecting, were you showing where the pool equipment would be?
Pool equipment is shown on the backside of the house, right about the center point of the house there.
Type is very small.
Okay.
Where the eight by, the five by ten pool equipment does add?
Correct.
Okay, so that's in the rear yard, okay. I have no further question. Any board members have questions?
I have just one more clarification because you mentioned that it has no adverse environmental impact. And that's because you've got the, you have these six rechargers put into the back. So any stormwater or additional runoff would be captured into those coltacs in the backyard.
Yeah, those are a conceptual location at this point. We haven't done testing on the property, but yes, we go into rechargers.
That, and you've managed to put this into a location to minimize the rock ledge removal?
Correct.
That side yard does operate as a, it seems to be that that whole side property is well screened and becomes like their backyard. So I have no other questions.
I would add that having been on the site and having walked the property, each of the adjacent properties, none of them have forward facing sides of their house. The house immediately to the left on Colonial actually has the garage on that side. So you wouldn't even be looking at the pool and you can't, the house obstructs anything on Colonial in the other direction. So I don't see how this would have any impact on the neighborhood.
Any other questions from the board? Any questions from the audience or the participants? Make a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Before you take a vote between Carol and Seth, do we know who's sitting in for Irene and who's going to be alternate?
When I came on the, um, oh, I'm sorry, that I don't know.
Carol can go. I can't, I thought the meeting started seven thirty since I was late, didn't hear. So Carol can do it.
That's fun.
She's lost Carol. There she is. You switched places.
Yeah, it makes us up periodically.
Francine, do you have to take a vote?
We have to make a motion.
Uh, someone like to make a motion in this case?
I can make it. Do you want me to make it?
Go ahead.
The board, uh, let's see, sorry.
Francine, did, did we get who closed the public hearing?
I closed the public hearing.
Okay.
I seconded it.
Okay, thank you.
With regard for a swimming pool on the premises located at one Colonial Lane, file number three, one, nine, three, section one, block twenty, parcel one, oh, seven. The pool in the side yard as proposed is not permitted pursuant to section one, ninety-two point five, one, five, A, one, C. In an R-ten zone. The board finds that the, uh, let's see. The board finds that the benefit to the applicant from the granting of the variance outweighs any detriment to the health, safety and welfare of the neighborhood or community. In reaching this conclusion, the board considered the following factors. Whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties will be created. Board finds that this pool will be obscured from view from the neighbors. This pool is in the side yard, which is not permitted to, to town code. But the side yard is operated as the, this property's rear yard. It is well screened from the neighbors and due to the irregular shaped footprint of both the lot and the location of the house, this makes for a very reasonable location for the pool. It will not be a detriment to nearby properties. There are no houses in the immediate adjacent properties that are facing, directly facing this pool. Whether an applicant can achieve their goals via a reasonable alternative, which does not involve the necessity of an area variance, the alternative would be to push this pool further back into the backyard, into the rear yard. But that would perhaps be limited by exposed ledge rock and have other challenges to place this pool. So this is a, again, a reasonable location to place the pool where it is joining the additional, the existing usable outdoor space for the property. Whether the variance is substantial, the pool is extending by definition of rear and side yard, sixteen feet into the applicant's side yard. But based on the size of this property, that is not substantial. Whether the variance will have an adverse impact on the physical or inventor, environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district, the board finds it will not have an adverse environmental impact. There will be underground cultech chambers to capture the runoff from any impervious surface that has been created. And the location of the pool has been chosen to perhaps minimize the amount of rock, ledge rock that will need to be excavated. And whether there has been a self-created difficulty, there, this is self-created because they would like to have a pool, but it is non-determinative in this matter. For the reasons stated above, the grant, the granting of the variance is in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the town of Mamaroneck. And would otherwise not be detrimental to the public welfare for reasons stated above. The variance is the minimum necessity, necessary to alleviate the difficulty detailed in the application, yet also preserves and protects the character of the neighborhood and the health, safety and welfare of the community.
To second it?
Second.
Francine?
Arthur?
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
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 Robin?
Yes.
Thank you.
Is that everybody?
That's it. It's done. Okay, we're moving on to application number two.
Yes.
Case number three, one, nine, six, Yasi and Allison Papadia, requesting legalization of an HVAC condenser unit on the premises located at sixty-three Harrison Drive and known on the tax assessment map as block five, zero, one, lot three, one, one.
Yeah.
Open?
Make a motion to open the public hearing? They're here?
Second.
Thank you.
I thought I just opened the public hearing.
It's open, they're here now.
Okay. Good evening. Is your, is your volume?
I, I lost Jonathan.
Yeah, you did. You lost Jonathan.
Where'd he go?
I don't know.
I moved him.
You moved him?
Put him out in the hallway?
He knows he's gone?
Okay.
Could I explain to us what your intent is of doing?
Yeah, so we have a.
You can see, you can see me now?
Yes.
Yeah, sorry, Jonathan.
Something I said?
Yes, please, go on.
Okay, um, so we have an AC condenser unit out the, um, the front of our, our house. It's currently twenty-seven point six feet away from the boundary and the, um, the setback is thirty-one, I believe. The condenser unit was, was there when we moved in in twenty-ten. I, I only know it's been there since at least two thousand and seven that we can see on the Google Maps. It, we, we weren't aware of this problem with the variance until just last year where we had some additional work done and the survey was, was submitted. And that's when we found out that it's not in, in light with the regulations. There's, the, the only alternative location to put it is the side of our house. And really that would be detrimental to everyone involved, including our neighbor that, that has their living room right on that side. The, the nearest property that sees or hears the AC unit at the moment is about a hundred feet away on the opposite side of the street. So, um, I don't think it's an issue for them. And, and it's surrounded by some shrubbery as well. So you can't actually see it too much.
Now, um, look, is this the only condenser that's in the front of the house?
Yes.
Oh, okay. And it's been there since two thousand and seven at least?
At least, yeah.
I have no further questions. Does anyone else on the board have any questions?
Just for the building inspector, I would assume that you've had no complaints about the air conditioning you never logged with the building department?
No, we looked, checked through the files. There is no complaints on it. Like he said, the only reason it came up was because they did other work and it came out on a Hasbell survey.
Yeah, I mean, having viewed the property, it's the most logical place for it. Although this is a front yard, it's burdened by two front yards. Of course, it's a corner lot. And this actually, the condenser faces the street only versus facing another home that's there. The only, the only question I had was, I was just, I'd looked through the specs. I didn't see a DB rating for this unit. Am I missing something here?
I sent all the full specs as, as I found it online. Unfortunately, we didn't install it, so I had to research that model online.
I mean, I'm going to take it on faith that it's not that loud because, um, we said we've never heard of a complaint.
Seventy-two. Even if it was loud for a moment.
Seventy-two, I think, is what this was.
Excuse me?
Seventy-two. If you look on the page one, it says normal sound. Then on the right side, it says seventy-two. I'm assuming that's.
Yeah, nominal sound, seventy-two.
Oh, yeah.
Even if it was, Jonathan, given the location of it, it, it probably has the least impact on the community.
Yeah, it would also be a significant burden to be extending the condenser line significantly. You have to go through a garage. I mean, I think that the economic impact wouldn't warrant making a change on the owner. And probably if they had originally applied for this, that would have been the most logical location, not to violate the rear yard.
Any other questions from our board?
No.
Questions from the virtual audience?
I have no emails and nobody has their hand up in the attendees.
Well, I'd like to make, make a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
We have to vote on this? So that's enough? Yeah, I'm sorry. Robin?
No, I was gonna say I would do the, um, the motion.
Go through it.
Okay, so this is case number three, one, nine, six. Legalization of an HVAC condenser unit on the premises located at sixty-three Harrison Drive. The air conditioning condenser unit in the front yard is twenty-seven point six feet where thirty feet is permitted. And, uh, the questions are, one, whether there would be an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties will be created. No, we don't believe so. The unit has been there since approximately two thousand and six, before the family moved into the house. And there have not been any complaints. The unit is not noticeable from the street as it's surrounded by shrubbery. And the location is probably the, has the least impact on the community. Whether the applicant can achieve their goal to get a reasonable alternative that does not involve the necessity of an area of variance. Again, this is the most logical place for this unit on a corner lot. It has the least impact in the community and it would be very expensive for them to move it and probably not optimal. Not into a worse position. The variant, whether the variance is substantial? No, it's not substantial because it's twenty-seven point six feet where thirty is permitted. So it's a minimal, uh, it's really a minimal variance. Whether it would have an adverse impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district? No, we don't believe that it would. In fact, it would probably have a worse impact if it was somewhere else because it's not visible from the street. It doesn't face, uh, it's, it's hidden. And, um, it's really in the ideal spot for a condenser unit in this case, given the property. Uh, has it been, is it a self-created difficulty? Yes. It's almost always a self-created difficulty, but it's not determinative in this case.
I'd like to second.
Second.
Francine?
Arthur?
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Robin?
Yes.
Thank you.
Enjoy your condenser.
Thank you.
Application number three, case number three, one, nine, eight, Jake Cutler. Application requesting to replace an existing fence on the premises located at Seven Edgewater Place and known on the tax assessment map as block five, zero, five, lot one, eighty.
Give me a second.
Nice picture.
Third time.
That's, that's, that's four. We need Jake.
And Francine, I forgot to ask for the last application, but I maybe, do we know to send this one as well?
Both. This one also. Is, uh, Jake Cutler? No, I know him on, you're the next one.
I'm the next one. Thank you.
Hang on, we'll see if the number three is here.
Going by the wrong, uh, list, excuse me.
Yes, he's here. Yes, he's here.
He's, he's answered on the screen.
Where?
I'm fine. There you go. Okay, Arthur, you want to open?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to open the public hearing. Jake, you're on.
Hey, you want me to start off?
Yes, please.
You have to tell us what you want to do and why.
Uh, everyone, thank you very much for your time and being here. Arthur, I do hope you're feeling better soon. We had a, an existing fence at the rear of the house. Uh, the existing fence was a six-foot tall fence and when we replaced it, well, we were not advised that code was to five feet. During the installation of that fence, uh, it was made known to us by the town that the code is to five feet. Fence is a six-foot fence, but actually the top foot section of the fence is a decorative section that has, um, you know, partial obscurity to come through it. And so we, it's also a very small section of the fence and we're here for a variance to prove that fence.
This is a point of order to the chair. Could we note that this was a legalization, not, um, because this was already installed?
Sure. But a question I have for a moment. Jonathan, you went to the property, is that correct?
Yes.
What were your observations?
We're familiar with a lot of these properties with the large sloping area that sits behind them. And we know that they have extremely tight proximity. I mean, you can share your gray poupon from one window to the next, you know, with each of these. This property actually has a driveway on either side of it, unlike many of them. But there's an outbuilding on the property, the immediate left, which obscures a large portion of this fence. So what you're really seeing is what, two and a half panels that are actually at six feet that are visible and almost visible to nobody that's out here, except the neighbor. So my only comment would have been, and you know, you've got a nice fence that's, you have both sides are finished sides of the fence. I would think that the neighbor on the other side would also appreciate the added privacy of the extra foot that's there. This is not intrusive or obstructed to the balance of the neighborhood that's out there because it really only affects these two properties.
I agree from the photograph that that is a very good assessment.
Actually, if you, if you see the photograph that shows the larger picture of the fence that's out there and you see immediately to the left, that's the outbuilding that I was talking about in the neighboring property that obscures the bulk of the fence that's there.
Uh, I went to the site as well and that I totally agree. Those, those two panels of fence are, you're calling an outbuilding. I thought that was the garage structure for the neighbor's house. And it's like behind the garage and it's the back of the, back.
It, it could be a garage. I didn't want to walk on the other neighbor's property.
No, I, just looking over the fence. So it seems like, and then the property all runs downhill and away from all of those houses.
Yeah.
The fence from any neighbors to the side seems to be blocked by that, uh, structure in a direct line of sight. I don't think this has.
Jake, from the photograph that you submitted, there's a picture showing a solid fence. I don't know if you can see this. Can you explain where that is? Is that a five foot?
Yes, so, um, in, we did identify it on one of the maps that was sent in and I, I highlighted the two sections. So there was an upper section. Uh, there's a very brief section, like twelve feet of fence where there's a six-foot high, feet of fence. As you know, there's a significant topography to the back of our property, plants downward very quickly. And there's a five-foot fence on the lower section of the property for safety reasons. So no children, so no adults walk off of that area. And that fence is to five feet and that fence was not in question, um, as being up to code in any way.
Any board members have any other questions?
No.
I'd like to open it up to the virtual audience.
No emails and no one has their hand up.
I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing. Would someone like to make a motion on the application?
Second.
Yes?
I can do it again.
Why not?
I'm happy to do it. This is case number three one nine eight to replace, it's actually, it's not replacing. It's a legalization of a fence that has already been installed on the premises at seven Edge Water Place. And the fence on section five, block five, parcel one eighty. The fence in the side yard is proposed would be six feet where five feet is permitted. And further, the addition increases the extent by which the building is non-conforming. I don't know. Did we discuss that part of it?
That's always some.
Just standard.
That's standard. Okay. So the questions are whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties will be created. This fence is behind the house. It's viewed, it's, it's basically visible to nobody because of a structure in the neighbor's yard and because of where it's situated. It's not a detriment to the character of the neighborhood. And in fact, it provides a benefit to the neighbors in terms of visibility and it is finished on both sides. So if anything, it's, it adds something to the neighborhood. Whether the applicant can achieve their goals via a reasonable alternative, which does not involve the necessity of a variance. The top one foot of this fence is really a decorative piece that has visibility. The fence would have to be lowered or replaced as an alternative and it seems that that would not be necessary in this case since the fence actually adds to the neighborhood. Whether the variance is substantial? No, it's not substantial. It's only six feet where five feet is permitted. Will the variance have an adverse impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district? No, as we explained, if anything, it has, it increases privacy and is a nice looking fence to the extent that it's visible at all. Would the, whether this is a self-created difficulty? Yes, but it's not determinative. Is that, is that sufficient, Lisa? Okay.
I'll second that.
Thank you. And did anybody second closing? I didn't hear that.
Oh, I will.
Okay, thank you. And Arthur?
Yes.
Steven?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Robin?
Yes.
Thank you.
Jake, enjoy your fence.
Everyone, have a great night. Thank you, Arthur. Get better soon.
Thank you.
Application number four, case number three one nine nine, Imran Ahmed and Kermit requesting legalization of two HVAC condenser units on the premises located at seven twenty-one Forest Avenue and known on the tax assessment map as block two two zero, lot four two zero.
And this was duly noticed?
Duly noticed.
I'd like to make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
Thank you.
You're on.
Great. Good evening. Thank you very much for your time. I apologize. My wife can't be here. She's putting the kids to sleep. So I would like to come to you with a request for a variance for two existing air conditioning units that are, that came with the property as they were when we purchased the property earlier, sorry, last year. The variance is not significant, in my opinion. The condensers are nine point one and eight point seven within, sorry, nine point one and eight point seven feet from the sideline of the property. And I believe the code requires it to be ten feet. We were not aware of this when we purchased the house, but the condensers have been in place since about two thousand and ten. We were notified by the town that this was not within code and thus we are here requesting a variance for those two condensers. We don't think the variance is drastic. Like we said, it's nine inches within, nine inches within the ten-foot property line in one case and seventeen inches in the other. The condensers are not visible from any part around the house, largely because the building is in an L shape. And the air conditioning, the air condenser sit within the crook or within the envelope of that L shape. So they are not visible from the street. Thinking about the rear side of the house, they are not visible from the rear side of the house because of the elevation difference between our neighbors and our house. The one side that they are visible on facing our neighbors, that is the side where our neighbors also have their utilities. There are, there are trees separating the two. And we also have a letter of support as part of our appeal package from our neighbors whereby they, they state that they have no objection to the variance. If you should be so kind as to grant it.
Any questions from the board?
I would just say that I viewed this site and the adjacent house not only has multiple air conditioning compressors that are outside, it also has a generator that's on that side. These are split units with a low DB rating. And they've been in existence since two thousand and ten. I would assume that the building inspector could confirm there's never been a complaint on these.
We have not had any complaints on this.
Yeah, and I really wouldn't see a better place to potentially locate these. Not sure where they could be located that wouldn't require a variance on the property.
Any other comments from the board?
I, I just want to thank the applicant for a very organized, well put together packet. I was impressed.
Thank you very much. In return, I have to, I have to thank the directions that Francine and Richard were kind enough to give me through this process. Otherwise, it would not have been that way. I appreciate it.
I was, I was sure on. We open it up to our virtual audience. Questions?
I have no emails and I see no hands up in the attendees area.
I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing. Second, I'd like to second it.
Second.
Someone like to make a motion?
I can if you want.
Sure.
This is
Number four.
Case number four, application number four, case number three one nine nine, seven twenty-one Forest Avenue. Imran Ahmed is seeking a variance for two air conditioning compressors. Actually, a legalization of the two air conditioning compressors in the side yard, one of which is eight point six feet and one which is nine point one feet where ten feet is required. The app, the board took into account the balancing of the benefits of the applicant with a detriment to the health, safety and welfare of the community in doing this. It determined whether it was an undesirable change to neighborhood character or nearby properties. This is an existing, two existing units that have existed most likely since at least two thousand and ten without complaint. They sit in a alcove in the side yard towards the rear of the property. They are adjacent to a house where their air conditioning compressors and generator are directly across and this is well screened from the neighbor. In fact, the neighbor has put in a letter of support for the applicant here. Therefore, there should be no undesirable change to the neighborhood character. Whether the request is substantial, the board would find that the request is not substantial. From a practical standpoint, this is the best place to locate the air conditioning compressors. Doesn't appear that there's another place that would be suitable that would not require a variance. So this is the least amount of variance that would be required to meet the needs. Whether the request, whether the benefit can be achieved by other means feasible to the applicant. As I had previously stated, this is the best location. So it doesn't appear if they want to have air conditioning that it would be a better solution to the applicant. Whether the request will have any adverse physical or environmental effects, they are a very low footprint. So they don't take up much in the way of impervious pervious surface area. They are low DB units, so they have very little for a sound effect on the environment. And whether the alleged difficulty is self-created, I will say partially self-created because the user would like to have air conditioning, but this applicant only bought the house and unbeknownst to them, and obviously their type of company didn't pick up on this, that there was this existing situation. But either way, it's non-determinative in this matter. Respectfully submitted.
Question for you, Jonathan, on the substantiality of it. I, I think I was, I was looking at the alternative. Can you just restate the reason why it's not substantial?
That the, that they are relatively low footprint units and low DB and we're talking about a relatively small amount of variance that's required here, which is less than one foot in each of the cases, in one case and just over a foot in another in, as an encroachment. So the variance itself is not substantial and would meet the criteria, the minimum amount of variance that would be necessary to meet the needs.
Excellent. Thank you.
I would like to add to that also that they're very small volume. Francine, you want to?
Ready? Okay.
Who's going to second it? Second or it?
Second.
Nobody seconded. Thank you. Even more. Arthur Wexler?
Yes.
Steven?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
And Robin?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Application. Number five, case number three two zero zero, Gregory and Jennifer Nassan requesting four hundred and twelve square foot front porch addition on the premises located at twenty-one Mohegan Road and known on the tax assessment map as block two zero eight, lot five one five.
And this was duly noticed?
Duly noted.
Make a motion, open public hearing?
Second.
Hello. Good evening.
Hello, Paige.
Hello. Thank you all. Thank you all for, for hearing our case this evening. It's nice to see all your faces. Arthur, I'm sorry to hear you weren't feeling well.
Me too.
You were able to join us. So thank you. So we're, we're here this evening to.
One minute. Go ahead, Arthur. Open.
Didn't I open the public hearing already?
Not this one.
Oh.
Make a motion, open public hearing. Sorry, Paige.
Second.
Second.
Oh.
You're on again.
So I'm, I'm here tonight for Gregory and Jennifer Nassan at twenty-one Mohegan. And they are wanting to add a front porch to the front of their house and I'm going to share my screen and I'll walk you through what we're proposing. So here's the cover sheet. I'll jump it to the site plan. So the existing house, twenty-one Mohegan, we're in an R fifteen zoning district. So here's our, we have a forty-foot front yard setback. So unfortunately, the setback, the existing house does not comply with the front yard setback. So I'm going to zoom in. So we, the garage is at thirty point seven. Here's our, our front yard forty foot. So already the, the front door is not in compliance with the setback. And what we are proposing to do, jump to this, is to add a front porch here to the front of the house, which then, and I've given all the dimensions that I know Arthur likes to see. So we have, to the columns, we're at thirty point two, which puts the deck face at thirty foot. But then we have a section in the front where we have a gutter that overhangs. So we're twenty-nine point five. And then we have a first step off the stone walk and to that riser would be twenty-eight point six. And so that's the site plan of the porch. And then I'm going to show you a floor plan. So you can get a better sense of what we're talking. So we'll, we'll come up, we'll have a, a large stone pad right here. We'll step up onto the covered porch. Here's our existing front door. So this is all undercover. Then we have a kitchen door and then we'll have steps down to the side, side yard. And the lighting, we'll just have some overhanging pendant fixtures there and some wall sconces on the wall. So in terms of what it looks like elevation wise, so here's the existing front garage door, front door. Present front elevation. And then we're coming in, we're adding the covered front porch. We're gonna, we're proposing to change out the garage door and add a trellis to the front. But we are coming tonight for you for the front porch. And then the, from the side, so the front porch sticks out into the front yard from the side. And if Greg and Jennifer are on, if they have anything they want to add to the presentation, otherwise I'll open it up to the board for any questions.
No, I think that was great. Thank you, Paige. And thank you everyone for your time.
Thank you.
Paige, would you share page A one point two?
Certainly.
Show a good site plan with relationship to your neighbors and the neighbors don't protrude, you know, you're not protruding past the neighbors.
Right. Because as you know, Mohegan, yeah, Mohegan kind of curves around. So, you know, nineteen Mohegan, you know, here's the, from the garage. So we're kind of, we're still, it's, you strike a line, we're still back beyond that. And then when you look at twenty-five Mohegan, which is always down the road, we're still not.
Anywhere near them.
Yeah, we're not out in front.
Right.
Thank you, Steve.
I found it helpful when I was on site that the markouts were there and I, I visualized across the flagline to the adjacent house and it actually marginally sits behind the current setback of nineteen. So from a consistency standpoint, I didn't see any issue.
This looks like a part of the town that might have been zoned differently in the area was upzoned. Is that possible, Richard?
It's possible. I don't have the zoning maps in front of me, but.
There are all these, all these homes here are close to them.
Yeah, I mean, even this one has a very large right away also. If you look where her, I don't know if the edge of the road was actually found, but the edge of the road to your front property line is pretty wide there.
All right.
Right.
Any other questions from, any questions from the board?
No, I actually think it'll look quite nice.
I think it enhanced the house tremendously. Paige, when do you expect, when do you expect to come back to us for the little addition of the garage?
On this one?
Yeah.
Well, it's, it's an architectural.
It's architectural and, and it depends on the cost of it. We're working out the details of the cost.
Okay. And no other questions from the board? Like to open up to our virtual audience if there's any comments.
I think the board received comments, letters on this. Is that right?
Yes, we had obtained four letters of support from neighboring properties and I forwarded those on to Francine.
So that'll become part of the record.
I don't have any emails or hands up.
So I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing. Like to second?
Second.
Someone like to make a motion? Someone like to make a motion?
I can, I can make a motion.
Good.
File number thirty two hundred for a four hundred and twelve foot, through, I'm sorry, four hundred and twelve square foot front porch addition on the premises located at twenty one Mohegan Road. Section two, block eight, parcel five fifteen. The front porch as proposed will be twenty nine point five feet, where forty feet is required. The steps as proposed will be twenty eight point six feet, where forty feet is required. The board finds that the benefit to the applicant from the granting of this variance outweighs any detriment to the health, safety and welfare of the neighborhood or community. In reaching this conclusion, the board considered the following factors, whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties will be created. The board finds no detriment. The architect has designed the porch to both complement the existing house using elements that are represented in the community and in the neighborhood. But it looks to really enhance the presence of the house to the street. In addition, can you hear me? Yeah. In addition, that the, the house with the porch, with the front porch setback being twenty nine point five feet will still be behind. It's the neighboring house to the left slightly. The neighboring house to the left at nineteen Mohegan will still visually be, I think, a few feet proud of this house at twenty one Mohegan. And there's a large amount of property between the neighbor to the right. In addition, there's a large right of way, town right of way before the street. So although it might be twenty nine feet to the property line, it gives the appearance of being greater than that with the town's right of way to the actual street. There's no sidewalk in front of this house. Whether an applicant can achieve their goals via reasonable alternative does not involve the necessity of an area variance. The entire house currently sit, is that, the entire house is already sitting inside the front yard setback. So anything added to the front of the house would require a variance. The existing front door is encroaching upon the setbacks.
I thought it was only the garage.
No, it's the front door, I believe, right Paige?
Yeah, right, right, just-
Front door and the garage. The house just makes it, but by adding to it, anything, any usable front porch would require variance. The variance is not substantial. It's four hundred and twelve square feet, and it is in keeping with the character of this house. Whether the variance will have an adverse impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood, there are no adverse environmental impacts to this project. And it will help to enhance the presence to the street there. But it does not impact the light or block any neighbor's visual line of sight. Whether there's been a self-created difficulty, it has, it is a self-created difficulty, but it is non-determinative. And for these reasons stated above, we would, the variance is the minimum necessary to alleviate the difficulty detailed in the application and preserves and protects the character of the neighborhood and the health, safety and welfare of the community. I think it'll look very nice.
I would like to add a comment that porches like this on these streets really be more life, personal life onto the street and things. It's always a positive.
Yes, one of the letters actually said they can't wait to come and entertain with you on that porch.
Steve, would you object if I just embellished your substantiality finding as far as the four hundred and twelve square feet is deemed minimal in light of the, you know, the relationship or location to the adjacent houses on the street?
Sure. You want, that's fine. Thank you.
Who's on the second?
Second, second.
Did I close the public hearing yet?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Arthur?
Yes.
Steven?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Robin?
Yes.
Thank you.
Enjoy your porch.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Jonathan? Architectural features can only go no more than two feet into a required yard. Wonderful fact.
Application number six, case number three two zero one, Stephen Rabinowitz, requesting a second floor addition on the premises located at two one two Homex Road and known on the tax assessment map as block four one six, lot seventy five.
I want to bring to the board's attention that I know Stephen Rabinowitz. I don't think that will affect my ability to make a decision in this case, but I wanted to let the board know.
Thanks. Make a motion, go over here.
Who's second?
Second.
Thank you.
You're on.
Oh, thank you so much. Good evening, members of the board. My name is Paul Shaneberg. I'm an architect in Ryan, New York. And I'm representing Stephen Rabinowitz. We are proposing a second story addition to include a bedroom or an office and a bathroom, can be a bedroom too. I'm gonna go, I'll explain, I go share screen. It's a very difficult, non-conforming site. There is no increase in footprint of the house, but the site itself is supposed to be a hundred and fifty feet in width. This is only a hundred and five, and that's on the angle. Actually horizontally across, it's actually less where the house is. And so we are asking a variance for a side yard setback. The requirement is fifty feet and, oh, thirty five, I'm sorry, thirty five. And we are proposing eighteen foot six inches. So we need a variance of sixteen foot and six inches. I'm gonna share the file. Right. I have shared screen. Hold, give me a second.
Sure.
I'm sorry, okay. So, this is it now. I do want you to pay attention to this. Sorry, everybody, to the, don't pay attention to the site plan in the set. There was a miscommunication. I'd like you to pay attention to the first site plan right here. And this is it. As you can see the site, how narrow it is, and you see where the addition is, it's on top of the existing first floor. And the, let me go to the, the plan. Give me a second. Sorry. I think this is probably nauseating. So there is the existing elevations of the house. And so we're proposing it on the rear side above this one-story element.
On the elevation, that's to the left of that. What is that big white area that has the gable roof?
That's a side elevation. It's sort of a demo, Arthur, drawing, we're removing the, the finishes of the wall there. So there's somewhat starting construction documents, Arthur. And then you can see the plan here. So on the left, there's actually roof there now, so we're adding the study above there with a bathroom. And you can see on the right, the roof plan, so the rendered materials, the shingles show the new addition. Okay?
With a big cricket.
Yeah, big cricket, ice cricket. Arthur, you may have worked in this house at one point. Oh, I just lost it.
Me?
Did you work in this house before, Arthur, or no?
I don't think so.
Okay. There's the, the rear elevation on the right. You can see the addition on the right. One story above, the, the four windows below is the master bedroom existing, and the addition up above with a copper standing seam roof and part of it that wraps around. And this is the side elevation of it. It's, it's not massive, it's in keeping the scale of the house. The materials are the same, the windows are very similar. There, my client spoke, spoke with a neighbor, and the neighbor to the left is the only one who would really be impacted. And he seems to be fine with it. There's a good amount, if you visit the site, amount of vegetation between the neighbor on the left. And there's really, given the site, there's really nowhere to add on to this property. And, and the house itself, total square footage is, you're allowed over almost ten thousand square feet. We're, we're almost half, a little bit more than half of that. The house is at fifty seven hundred square feet at the end of the day. The addition is four hundred and forty-three square feet.
Well, it's a nicely integrated addition.
Thank you.
Any, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, while saying a dormer, you can see the dormer on the front also to break up the roof, because that roof is a-
Might have been done many, many years ago. All right. Any questions from the board? Nothing? Nobody?
What?
What?
My client is on also, if you have any questions for Mr. Rabinowitz or Stephen.
All right.
Welcome.
Thank you.
You open it up to the virtual public?
Have no emails from, hands up. Was there a letter submitted from the neighbor? You said the neighbor was in support, but I didn't see something.
My client, Stephen-
I'll, I'll, they, the neighbor, we've spoken to them. And they asked us what we were doing, and there's a lot of construction going on on our side of the street, so they, they had asked.
Across the street is-
Yes, yes, yes. As you know, so I, I assured everyone, we're not doing any excavation, it's just carpentry. And everyone was fine. The, the neighbor's side, the, what's on the other side of the fence on our, you know, adjacent to the neighbor is an enclosed gym. So it's not, it's not a part of their house that's occupied by anyone who, who sleeps or so it, it's just a blank wall that faces our property there, which is a side of a gym.
I, I walked the property on the side, and you know, that if it extended up, you know, the additional story, it's not going to change anything about how the two houses affect one another.
All right.
I would agree. And it's, what's remarkable is, as soon as you walk around the side of that house and then see a mile expanse, you know, behind the house, you know, it almost dwarfed the current house on the property.
Right, I mean, it's really interesting. Oh, on the other side, yes.
To the, well, I'm saying to the rear of the property. Like you said, the available FARD relative to the total size of the lot, you know, this is mixing it out. And it would seem incredibly impractical to continue to expand out towards the back.
Yeah.
And- Do you have a hundred-foot buffer there to, you know?
Yes.
Yeah, but it, what is it? It's five hundred feet? It's gotta be to the back there?
Yeah, it's a, it's, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a pretty long. I don't know if it's five hundred, but yeah, we, we still have plenty of room even inside the buffer. But this made the most sense.
And where does the wetlands end? Is it on your property?
No, the wetlands, the wetlands continues all through the, the entire, the side of the street is one side to the, to the end is wetlands, and the wetlands is within the, it was within, was in the, within the buffer.
If you look at the site plan, you'll see that the buffer, the buffer zone is right past the, the swimming pool.
Right.
Oh, now I remember this house. Okay, thanks. Any other questions from the audience? Robin?
No, I'm, I'm offering to do it.
We're gonna get to it. Have to close the public hearing.
Yes.
I would just ask in the future, Mr. Shaneberg, if, when presenting these to the board, if you can have existing to proposed, existing to proposed, so it's easier than having to jump back between the pages.
You noted.
Someone like to second closing?
Second.
Someone like to make a motion, probably? No. Good.
Okay, should I go ahead?
Yes, please.
Okay, so the questions to be answered are, oh, I'm sorry, actually, I'm jumping ahead. This is case number three two oh one, Stephen Rabinowitz, for the premises located at two twelve Homex Road, section four, block sixteen, parcel seventy five. The second floor and the side yard as proposed will be eighteen point five feet. Is it eighteen point five or eighteen point six?
Eighteen foot six inches, so it should be eighteen point five, eighteen foot six inches.
Okay, eighteen point six inches, where thirty five feet is permitted. Lisa, is that okay? Do we have to amend the? Or it doesn't matter, because it-
It's the same thing. It's eighteen point five feet, eighteen point six inches.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, I misunderstood. Okay, fine. Okay, so will there be an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties created? There should be little, if any, impact on the neighborhood or the nearby properties. The addition is only at the second floor. There's no increase to the footprint of the house. And the scale is in keeping with that of the house. So there won't be any undesirable change. Mr. Rabinowitz spoke with the neighbor to the left, who's the only one impacted, and they are okay with this addition. Whether the applicant can achieve these goals via a reasonable alternative, which does not involve the necessity of a variance, no, the existing house is non-conforming with regards to setback. The area for any addition is limited. The property is a little unusual. And most likely, any other addition would also require a variance. So this is a reasonable alternative. Whether the variance is substantial, no. The proposal is eighteen point five feet, where thirty five feet is required. The total added square footage is four hundred and forty-three square feet. And the house would be still well within the allowable square footage of fifty seven sixty-five square feet, that's what this says. But it would be within the allowable square footage of the house.
Robin, can you just add on to that, the, in the context of substantiality for the side yard encroachment, why, why that number is not substantial in light of the orientation to the street and the neighbors?
Why it is not substantial?
In other words, I don't want it to just be because it, you know, the amount of, due to the amount of the encroachment, it's not substantial. Because in other scenarios, an eighteen and a half foot encroachment would be, could be substantial.
Well, in this case, it, there's no increase to the footprint of the house.
I think you have to look at the, also the configuration of the site. And the fact of the matter is that you're not increasing the setback at that point, is that correct?
Right.
It's up to an odd-shaped lot. And not increasing the, the setback would lead it to be, I think, not substantial.
Right, because it's right on top of what's already there. Yes, okay, thank you.
I agree. Whether the variance will have an adverse impact on the environment or environmental conditions, no. It has, will have a minimal impact certainly on the front and the street elevation. It fits nicely into the scale of the house. The neighbors are comfortable with it, the neighbor to the left, who's the only one impacted, and aesthetically, it fits in and will look good.
This one goes more to physical impacts like bulk air, stormwater, things, things like that, less, less about aesthetics, so.
I see. Okay, yes, all right. So there has been no adverse impact on the physical environmental conditions in the neighborhood that have been discussed. So there, I'm assuming that there are none, since they have none, none have been raised. Is that appropriate to say?
Well, can we add that since the footprint is not expanding, and it's that it won't be adding impermeable surface to generate more stormwater, that it's not affecting the sightlines of the neighbors?
Okay, it is not affecting the sideline of the neighbors, it's- It's not adding surface that would be detrimental to the environment. Um.
Well, I do. So those are those, are those the issues you're looking to?
It doesn't even extend up past the main ridge of the house. So it's not a, it's not the highest point on the house as designed. So, um, it, it won't create a detriment to any neighbors. And then the closest neighbor in proximity is a gym structure with no windows facing, uh, the Rubenowitz's, uh, house.
Okay, I, I, I adopt that reasoning and thank you for the assistance.
Thank you.
Um, whether has, there has been any self-created difficulty? Yes, uh, but in this case, we don't find that too, um, too, uh, substantial, where we don't find that to be detrimental.
Someone like to second?
Second.
Carol, you were first.
Thanks for the help, everyone. This was a little more complicated.
Arthur?
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Robin?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, members of the board.
Thank you, neighbors.
Thank you.
Application number seven, case number three, two, zero, two, Jay and Catherine Quinn, Quinnville. Requesting a deck addition on the premises located at 21 Copley Road, known on the tax assessment map as block 409, plot eight, one known.
Make a motion to open the public hearing.
Hey, Rich, could you let in?
Second.
Nope.
Second.
Thank you.
It was duly noticed?
It was duly noticed.
Uh, good evening, everybody. Chris, Lynn Agro, Lewis and Lewis Architects for, uh, the Quinnbills, who I believe are also on or maybe, uh, in the gallery. Greg Lewis is also with us. Um, hi, Greg. Let me, uh, if I can figure out how to do it, share my screen and I will, uh, walk you.
You're better because your, your plans don't fit in my Zoom spacing.
Girl, I can put them on the floor.
There's, here's our title. We'll skip down to our, uh, site plans.
Plans are bigger than the variance you're looking for.
They might be. Um, so to start with the existing plan, uh, this is for the essentially repair and slight enlargement of an existing deck. Uh, the existing deck is non-conforming, uh, but was, uh, constructed, uh, with a variance in, I believe, 1999. So it's been there quite some time and was approved at the time. The, uh, proposed addition, moving to the proposed site plan on the right, the proposed addition is really just to square up the, uh, I guess you'd call clipped corner of the deck, uh, and fill in that, uh, that area. And then also to add a, uh, a stair down from the side of the deck to the side yard. Uh, this is an unusual lot in as much as it has, uh, streets on three sides, as it were. Um, Copley, Kenmare and Alden, uh, sort of surround the lot as a peninsula. Um, Kenmare is a fairly wide street. It, uh, has sidewalks on both sides. And there is, as you probably saw from the photographs and perhaps if you were on site, uh, a significant row of, uh, bushes, relatively tall bushes screening the, um, the deck and what would be the stair from the, um, from view on Kenmare. At any point, just jump in with questions. I can jump down to the site plan. I should say the, the floor plan. Um, here to give a little closer view, um, this is the corner that's going to be filled in. It's going to be done in conjunction with a small bump out of the existing family room. So part of the reason for the, uh, filling in the corner is because a small area of the deck is going to be lost into the house. Um, and, and squaring it up will help with furniture placement and traffic flow through the deck, which is also the point of the stairs.
Uh, I went to the site and, um, I saw the clipped corner. It seems to, uh, make sense to square that out and the stairs, uh, create or increase the functionality of kind of using that porch around and getting into the yard. It's well screened, certainly, um, that backyard, but with the arbor Vitae on Kenmare. Um, Rich, I have a question for you. Are you still on? I lost a lot of.
I'm here.
Screen. Hey, do, on their site plan, they're showing, it doesn't, um, it's, it's not impacting anything, but they're, they're showing two 30-foot front yard setbacks. And then the rear yard called out facing Alden as a 25-foot rear yard setback, even though that faces a street.
Yeah, it should be called as a front. I, I think I saw that too. It's, it's not really affecting us at this point.
It doesn't impact us at all, but do you, with a site like this, we don't come across this that often, have three front yard setbacks?
Yeah.
And no rear yard setback?
I'll, I'll correct them.
No, it's, it's not impactful.
Where would you have a rear? Yeah, you might still have a rear yard. You just might not have a side yard. I mean, I have to go back also through.
Yeah, I thought they, uh, hierarchy of the yards and front yards, then side, rear yards and side yards.
Well, it would be, it, it might be defined as like your rear yard, but you might have to meet a front yard setback.
You would, you would call like, say the one Kenmare.
A front yard is on a, faces a street.
Yeah.
First off.
You would pick one real front yard, so, but it would, one would be considered a side yard, but requiring a front yard setback. One might be considered, you know, so if we even took this out of this property alone, you would have one that would be a front yard, one that would be a side yard with a, you could have two side yards. It's requiring front yard setbacks, I guess, in this case, and then a rear yard in the back.
You could also take the, uh, not, well, wait, wait, there are three street uh, property lines. Those are front yards. You can make, the only other property line is the one that goes from Copley down to Holden. It can be a rear yard there. The house would be a non-conform, and that portion of the house would be non-conforming.
Correct. So like I said, you would have, you basically would have a front yard, side yard, side yard that required a front yard setbacks in one rear yard.
All right, I'm sorry to confuse.
All this, all like makes sense. Any property line on a street is a front yard. Let's just start with that.
Purpose is yes.
So you have 30 feet, 30 feet, 30 feet, and the next yard is a rear yard. And now we make the house not conforming in those areas.
Correct. And the only one thing we'd have to do is go look, make sure that the, was never called something else when the house was built. You know.
Anything else to recall?
I had, I had a couple of questions.
You, you get what I'm saying?
Me? Yes.
Good.
I think there were some questions.
Yeah, I just had a couple of questions. Um, can we confirm, Richie, that the, um, original variance that was granted was only for the deck? I didn't see anything in the packet on the original variance. One sec. I don't know if I can confirm or deny that right now.
But what else would it be for the one-story addition? Might have been there originally.
That one story.
Trying to get at was, was this just really in dealing with the deck? Or was there an addition that already went out in the deck? And it, it just seemed odd. Was there some compromise originally given for taking that corner? Because it doesn't really look architectural. And the other questions I would have for the architect, what's the square footage of the actual variance that you're, the addition you're looking at? Because it would seem relatively small. Do you know?
The addition to the deck or the, to the home?
The triangle that you're asking for.
It's approximately 55 square feet.
John, you did read through, um, Lewis's response about how many, there's four different zoning variances in the house?
No.
Okay, it's on one of the pages in there.
I got a very small file on this one. Well, the applicant's, where the original variance was, uh, for the house was situated less than 22 feet, Kenmare with 30 feet was required. So applicant was, went eight, one feet, eight, 1998 for the deck having a side yard. So this is the deck variance understood with respect to the side front setback on the Kenmare property. Okay, so this dates back to 98. Okay. But you, you're saying that act, that small corner area is actually 55 square feet? It, it's gotta be much smaller than that.
Let me, let me, um.
Certainly looks a lot smaller.
It's just going to go to substantiality. I mean, I, that. It's six by.
Yeah.
By six by.
Point five.
It, it's gotta be like 15 and a half square feet.
Greg, maybe you're counting in the, uh, bump out for the.
I mean, simple numbers. If it's six by six, it's 36 square feet divided by two, it's 18.
Yeah.
Something like this and that. So we're talking about maybe 16 square feet here.
Yeah, that's correct. It's, I, uh, forgot to divide by two because it's a triangle.
Right. Okay. Any other questions?
And, and any other questions from the board? Can we open up our virtual, uh, audience?
Have no emails and nobody raising their hand.
I would like to make a motion to close the public hearing. Someone like to make a motion, please?
I can do it. So, application number seven, case three, two, oh, two, Jay and Catherine Quinnville. Say that correctly. 21 Copley Road, um, is seeking a variance, uh, for a front yard deck. That will be at 18.1 feet where 30 feet is required. The applicant in, the board in looking at the application took into account to balance the benefit of the applicant and versus the detriment to health, safety and welfare of the community. In doing so, the board took into account whether an undesirable change of the neighborhood character or whether there be a change in nearby properties. Uh, the board finds that in this situation, there would be no undesirable change to the character of the neighborhood. The applicant is seeking to square out, uh, a corner of an existing deck, uh, that is currently non-conforming, of which had previously received a variance, has existed since at least 1999, uh, without any complaint. Um, it fits clearly within the character of what's going on. And if anything, the squaring out will be more consistent with the household. Uh, would be noted that on the side of the house where this is being added, there is substantial screening between the street. There's also a, uh, meaningful, uh, a, a buffer for the right of way that is there in addition to the distance from the property line. So the 18.1 feet is actually greater by some number. I would estimate another several feet. Whether the benefit can be achieved by other means feasible to the applicant, the board would find that no, there is not any other, uh, possibility. If the need is to square out this deck by adding a triangle corner there, uh, it either could be done or not done. You can't achieve it in some other way. Whether the request is substantial, the board would find it's not substantial. We're talking about a total addition of 16 square feet, uh, added on to an exterior deck, uh, that is just above the grade level. So it wouldn't have, it wouldn't be noticeable in any way, the 16 square feet. Uh, as previously noted, it would actually probably make the deck look more consistent. Uh, whether the request will have any adverse physical or environmental effects, uh, 16 square feet added to an outside deck would have no impact on air, light runoff or anything else. Uh, whether the difficulty is self-created, is clearly self-created as the applicant wishes to, uh, add to the deck to make it more usable, but it's non-determinative in this matter. Respectfully submitted.
Second.
Next name?
Arthur Wexler.
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Robin?
Yes.
Joy, you're, uh, deck.
Hey, good night, everyone.
Take care.
Take care.
Night.
Application number eight, Andrea and Timmy, Tim O'Neil requesting a second story addition on the premises located at two, six, one, Rockingstone Avenue, known on the tax assessment map as block one, one, five, lot one, zero, four.
Duly noticed?
Yes.
Make a motion to open the public hearing?
Second.
Thank you.
Hi, Abby.
Hello?
Jim?
I should be there.
Well, you're not. You can't see you.
I'm gonna hit video.
I'm sorry, hold on.
On the bottom, video.
How's that? You there?
Nope.
Nope.
No.
We should disappear.
Go to the left, bottom left.
Sorry.
Bottom of your screen on the left-hand side.
There's a little video camera.
It says camera, click on it.
I've just hit the video camera. Can you see that working?
Nope.
Can you see if you can share your screen?
No, I just pressed that. Um, yeah, hold on. I'm sorry for the. Can you see the screen now?
No.
We can see your drawings without you.
It's the good part. I hope. Um, okay, uh, may I start?
Yes, you may.
Okay, well, uh, this is two, two, sixty-one, um, Rockingstone. You saw this about, uh, a year ago when we, uh, proposed the deck facing forests and the little portico, as you see on the site plan right here, right up here on the corner. Uh, that was the generous, uh, suggestion of the board to extend the deck out a little more and make it a little bit more, uh.
That's why I don't have.
Uh, if you recall that.
Uh, it was a good choice.
It was a, uh, graceful, uh, good choice. You're right. Um, now, uh, what they'd like to do, which was kind of in the back of their minds, uh, was to, uh, take this cabin and, uh, keep it in company with itself. And just on this section, the west section, build the second floor out, uh, so that it, um, uh, would be, uh, basically a full house now. So, so basically this is the existing house right here like this. We'd like to just line this up at the 20 feet. You see right to the point where it's, it's labeled on the survey and bring this up. And that's the addition right there, the section here and this section here. There's nothing on the, uh, Rockingstone side cliff. It's all on the internal part of the, uh, of the site. So it's this room. This is the side from the driveway, if you went in the driveway over here. This is what you look at.
Jim, it's hard when you say this. You're not pointing. Are you pointing anything with the pointer?
I, I thought you could see my, my cursor moving. I'm not sure.
So the one on the left is the, is the elevation facing Rockingstone?
Right, with the.
Upper left, correct?
Upper left. I'm sorry you can't see my cursor moving. I don't know what that is. Uh, the upper left is the, uh, the house with the porch built last year. And then the, uh, right side, upper se- second floor is what they proposed with that one window and the small.
Excuse me. The upper left, it says proposed elevation, Rockingstone. Wouldn't that be forest?
Uh, I'm sorry, it's on the corner. I must have said Rockingstone. Sorry.
Yeah, it's on a drawing, Rockingstone. So I think it's forest.
Yes, it is forest. I'm sorry. I, I must have just been.
Confusing when you're talking about.
Uh, the, I, I labeled this one the. I labeled this one the driveway side, the middle one on the right, so that was
Okay.
here on the side. And then the rear elevation is, is on the bottom, rear elevation. There's a small porch being added with a roof, one story, that's completely compliant with zoning, and then the back of the addition is the upper side of that drawing.
So, the front, the front elevation on Rockingstone, if I understand this properly, where you have the rake of the roof and then slopes a most tender rate of the rest of the roof, the addition is that whole triangular shape above it, is that correct?
That's correct, yes, with the one.
Is there what's there now, nothing?
Nothing is there.
Okay, okay.
There's a small two-by-two stairway window, it's like a tiny little warmer, I'm sorry, it's on the photograph.
Yeah, Arthur, in your package, you had some four-color photographs, and they have the forest side, front elevation.
Sorry, my miss, no, we're there.
Yeah, but we'll look at a drawing, we'll have to follow.
That's what I'm saying, the pictures, the pictures are clear.
Find them, hold it. Our draw.
The deck came out nice.
Yeah, the deck looks great. Okay, I got the pictures, hold on a minute.
There, that one there. Is that working on your screen?
Well, you reduced the.
Is the photograph coming on your screen?
All we have is the smaller version of the plans now, you'd have to shrink, maybe shrink the plans all the way down.
One photograph is very dark.
Can you scroll down on that set of photographs and see the driveway side addition?
I just have to point out that for all the Zoom meetings, the first time we had a glitch, it's now, I can see it being a problem.
It's just switching between two separate PDF files, I'm sorry.
Not a negative comment, Jim, it's just that I can see.
All right, if I can screenshot, screenshot this. The, if you go to your package, it's RS Photos. Please share screen here.
Are you raising the the chimney?
No, we're taking it out and putting a different heating system in, that's actually an old, no, the chimney itself is fine, we're not, we're not anywhere near it.
What elevation am I looking at?
This elevation is the one off forest, the photograph.
Is the big tree in the picture a forest, that's looking at the side where you're gonna be doing the big dormer, so to say?
No, the big tree with the two windows to the right of it, that's the driveway side. And then, the rear elevation has that one singular, one-story roof over a two-foot-deep shed. And then, the other, the second picture down is the front off forest.
We can't see them, Jim.
I'm sorry, it's.
So, the picture, the fourth picture is about three-quarters, a picture showing three-quarters of the deck. And there is a chimney that's coming off where you're putting the addition on, isn't that correct? Am I wrong?
With the little dormer on it with the small window in it?
No, there's not a little dormer here, it's a picture showing stairs coming down from the deck on the left.
I think that's the left side of the, I think the addition is on the right side of that.
Arthur.
I'm very confused, sorry. I'm looking at the site, Brad.
Nothing changes on that picture with the portico and the steps you mentioned, except you'll see a roof line to the right of it that will take out that old kitchen chimney.
I'm looking, I'm looking at the site plan. And the site plan has the existing deck that you built, St. Forest Avenue, the driveway on the right.
Yep.
The triangular new area that you're gonna, I assume that's your area under required setback. That's where your construction is going. I'm looking at a picture that shows a chimney in the distance on the fright side, right side of the house, where the house is cut off, picking up, that's why I asked, chimney going away.
Arthur, is it stucco or stone?
From the picture, it looks like it's, good question, hold on.
My, the stone is staying and the stucco is going.
Not, not the big, not the big chimney in front, the beautiful chimney.
No, we're not touching that.
Good. Because the chimney sticking up, I think it's on this house, I can't.
It goes to the basement, it's an old furnace chimney that we're taking it out completely.
So, the question is, you're removing it, yes?
Yes.
Good, that's a good question.
Okay.
I'm putting wider stairs in.
Can you see my plan again?
No.
It's not.
Not working.
Well, it was before, I think Fran has to hit the share screen.
You should be able to share if you hit share screen, it's set up that has, all panels can share.
What are you proposing up on in the addition?
We're, this is Tim O'Neill, thank you for hearing us.
Sure.
Down, currently, it's just a one level.
Can you move a little to your right so we see you? Yeah, there you go.
So, it's a, it's a one-story addition, we're gonna put a master bedroom upstairs, because right now, downstairs, it's split between a little teeny kitchen, that chimney that's in the way, 28-inch staircase that goes up to the dormer on the other side, and so we're just gonna, and on the, next to the, on the other side of the stairs is our, what we call our master bedroom, it's a small bedroom downstairs. So, we're gonna combine that bedroom and the small kitchen and put a new kitchen in and put a master upstairs, that's the goal. And we're non-conforming because we're just going straight up from the existing foundation right now, we're not adding more encroachment, we're just going straight up. But the current house is, is non-conforming, as most of the houses are around here.
The only footprint change is the porch in the back, which is conforming.
Right.
Yeah, and the, it's just a gable coming off the driveway side of the house. I'm sorry that the picture isn't coming up, but I'm not getting the.
Jim, I think you're recording, and that might be what's causing, are you recording thing, did you hit record by accident?
There you go.
That's what's causing, because I actually could see you in the background.
Yeah, there I am. Arthur, can you see the floor plans now?
Yeah, I have them in front of me on the, on the drawings.
First floor is essentially the same with some partition rearrangement and moving the kitchen back to the back of the house.
Can you make them full screen?
A big box on top, ah, there we go.
And then, you see this, the dash line on the top drawing that goes from the middle of the right side down is, is the area under question, which is inside the 30, kind of like the deck was.
What you're really proposing to be in there are big walk-in closets.
Yes.
Yeah, it's not a big house.
No, no, I realize that, but in relationship to the room, it's a big walk-in closet.
Yeah.
What I'm struggling with is not seeing an existing second-floor plan here, to understand, again, that this is the minimum variance required to meet a need here. Did you have a demo plan that shows the existing?
I'm sorry, I don't have one specific here, but what it is, is this entire floor plan is basically what's there up to this added area in the front right here. This is all pretty much the way it is.
Well, that master's not there.
That's what I'm saying, this master isn't here, that's.
Saying, the, the wall between where the bedroom and bath is, is now the existing end of the house?
Right, I'm.
So, where, where is the dormer that comes out and the chimney?
At the end of the second floor, I think, correct?
Right now, you go up a small back, like a pantry stair, it's the only way up, and that's located right here, I'm sorry, I don't have an existing.
I can see your cursor. I just, but give me an orientation to show me about where the existing chimney is that's being removed when you look at the interior, right there, okay. So, because the slope down, I guess the roof line comes right down across where that master bedroom wall is going to be, that's about where the exterior, I'm sorry, the roof is?
This, this line, this dash line on the outside is the existing roof, the eve line that you see, this is the center, here's the old big stone chimney over here.
Click on your plan again so it's not blued, it's unselected, there you go.
Here, that's the stone chimney, this is the existing roof ridge, we're sending the roof ridge out this way, and then the roof slopes this way and this way.
I know, we're trying to just understand what's there now, so the bedroom that is on the forest side, the smaller bedroom that right now, in your plan shows right at the top of the steps, that doesn't exist either, that bath doesn't exist?
No, this, this is a small, the only way I can describe this house, it was like a cabin, they had almost nothing upstairs, it's little cubbyhole rooms. This, this room is here, we're not changing that, it's a den, this room is here, it's a legitimate bedroom.
Okay.
This is a small room with the sloping ceiling in it that makes it unusable.
And what would you say the square footage is of that triangle corner that is what you're looking for, for the variance?
It's, it's, it is eight by 18, so that's.
Five and a half.
So, it's 116, so it's 58 square feet?
It's a minimal efficient.
That's what I'm getting at, 58 square feet to create a tremendous amount of utility to give you a full workable master that's there, a workable bedroom on the second floor, and a nice walk-in closet for the master. Because even if you were to reduce the square footage by bringing it in, you would end up making the master bedroom significantly less usable.
Correct, and it also will enhance our kitchen, our kitchen right now is a tiny, tiny little kitchen, and we'll be able to extend that into the current bedroom on the other side of the stairs now.
Right, the stair takes up the first three feet of the master.
So, if I understand it correctly, you're gonna take usable space that you have presently, take that space, make it a more usable space on the second floor, and pick up the void of taking that space out to make a much nicer kitchen area, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Well, and you, and if I understood you before, you're removing a staircase right now that would violate both those spaces, right?
Absolutely.
Yeah, so.
It was trapped up there.
You know, and to me, you know, it's being done fitting all within the footprint and fitting architecturally with the balance of the building that's there to dramatically increase it, and what, what's the net effect on the FAR here? Do I have a zoning chart?
The lot is so big, it's on the, chart is on the first page, let me go back.
I think my eyes are not working well enough.
We, we are at 0.9, where 31 would be the number we have to stay below.
Right, so the lot is set up for a significantly, you know, larger house than what is there right now. Okay, so, you know, to me, what you're looking at is, by asking for a 58-square-foot variance, you're turning a house that's unusable in many of the areas because of how it's designed to what's a properly designed and usable, you know, house.
I would agree with that statement.
Oh, can I cut you short, Jonathan, I'm sorry?
I, I think I stated what I wanted to state.
Any other comments from the board?
No.
Any comments from the, the virtual audience?
Jonathan, I just, instead of 58, it's actually about 72 in that one square.
But in reality, it's not a big addition, given the size of the property, and there's no additional coverage being created by this. So, I would like to just move this along, I don't wanna fade out on you guys and.
There's no, no emails, and there's actually nobody in attendance, so.
I would like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Next name?
Will receive, thank you for that.
Did you ask me, did you ask me a question?
Do you want me to make the motion, move this along?
Sure.
Okay. So, this is case number eight, 261 Rockingstone Avenue, file 3203, Andrea and Tim O'Neil, who are seeking a second-floor addition, which will create an issue with a front yard setback where, of 30 feet, where 20 feet is requested by the applicant. This is an existing non-conforming structure which already violates the setback, and where the applicant is looking to sit within the existing footprint of the house but to go vertical. In, the board took into account balancing the benefit to the applicant versus the detriment to the health, safety, and welfare of the community. In doing so, it looked at whether a undesirable change in the neighborhood character or to nearby properties. The board finds there will be no adverse change to the neighborhood character. The addition, as stated, will sit within the existing footprint, it is consistent with the current architecture that's there, this is a large piece of property, the, it is burdened by two front yards, it also sits on a diagonal on the property which forces this corner where the addition is to be closer to Forest Avenue. The property line is also set back in addition with an existing right-of-way that is there that also takes it further from the street. Forest Avenue itself is a large street, it's a double-laned road, so, sorry, a double-stripe road, so it ends up being a substantial distance away from the properties that are across the street, and the immediate property that's adjacent to it also is set back in, also in odd orientation to the front. So, the way these two houses address one another, they would, it would simply complement one another by adding this addition. Whether or not the benefit can be achieved by other means feasible to the applicant, the applicant has shown plans that now show the existing house has a lot of items within it, a rear staircase that violates this, a sloping roof that makes many of these rooms unusable. The way that the addition is being done to add the square footage will improve the kitchen, create a master bedroom, return a room that right now is not usable into an additional bedroom, once again, all staying within the existing footprint. So, if they want to have this addition, I don't see any other way that this could be done that's feasible to the applicant. Whether the request is substantial, although the building is meaningful in what they're doing, the actual variance for the triangle that violates the setback is only 72 square feet. Looking at the total size of the property and the available FAR, it's a de minimis amount of additional square footage, so we find that it is not substantial. Whether the request will have any adverse physical or environmental effects, it will not affect air, light, or runoff here, since we're sitting still in the existing square footage, any of the vertical increases actually coming up to the existing roof line, won't cast shadows on anyone else. Whether the alleged difficulty is self-created, is clearly self-created as the applicant wishes to have a second-floor addition to approve the house, but it is non-determinative in this matter, respectfully submitted.
Like to make a motion on this? I mean, I made a motion, we have to vote.
Second.
My apologies.
Thank you, Robin. Okay, Arthur?
Yes.
Steven?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Carol? 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 I got it. Robin?
Yes.
Motion is carried?
Yes.
Enjoy your edition.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Take care.
I'm going to take a night, guys, because I've seen it go.
Thank you.
We just want to. I want to make a motion to accept the minutes as submitted.
Thank you. Second? Everybody? Okay.
Take care.
Take care, Arthur, feel better.
Don't fall on an elephant standing.
Richie and Lisa, can I throw out fifteen Marden Road?
I'm saying goodnight.
Goodnight, Arthur. Goodnight.
Bye.
Bye. I don't know, I don't know about Martin Road.
You know, tomorrow, let me look, let me look.
I'm also holding on to eight seventy-five Fenimore.
We tossed that the last one.
Yeah, you can get rid of that.
Okay.
Marden, I will look at tomorrow, I'll email everybody.
Okay.
Do we have a date for the next meeting?
February twenty-fourth. Okay?
Thank you all for continuing your terms. You guys were the most enthusiastic about continuing. Some people are like, okay, I'll do it. Everybody on zoning was very happy to continue, so thank you.
Just have to sign your papers.
Nobody asked me, does that mean I was drafted?
Your term's not up.
Oh, okay. That's the good news and the bad news is, the bad news, my term's not up?
For five years, I don't know when yours, actually I do.
Lisa, you got everything you needed?
I do, yes. Thanks.
All right.
You end up in twenty-three, your term expires.
Okay.
All right.
Have a good night, all. Stay healthy.
Night, everybody.
Bye, everyone.